You are watching Access LaPorte County Channel 97. Coming up next, it's the October 3rd, 2023 meeting of the LaPorte County Plan Commission. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot accesslaporte county dot org.
I'm going to call the LaPorte County Plan Commission for Tuesday, October 3rd to order. Rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please tune your phones on silence. Roll call, please.
Tony Hendricks?
Here.
Earl Cunningham?
Present.
Harold Parker?
Present.
Glenn Minnick?
Here.
Deb Vance?
Here.
Rita Beatty?
Here.
Joe Haney?
Present.
John Carr.
We have a quorum. Is there approval of the agenda as presented?
I make motion.
Second.
Motion second. Any changes, additions, corrections, deletions? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Is there approval of the minutes for the August 22nd, 2023 meeting?
Move to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
There's a motion to approve the minutes as presented in a second. Any changes, additions, corrections, deletions? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Petition number one. Petitioner Coral Lawn, John Lawn State, Andrew Volts, their counsel. Petition the Plan Commission to vacate an undeveloped but plotted right-of-way or alleyway adjacent to the property located at North Pine Lake, New Carlisle, Indiana. Is notification sufficient? This is prior to? This was? We moved on?
No, sir.
Thank you. Floor's yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, Attorney Beeji and Ashley and Mr. Polwin. My name is Andrew Volts. I represent Coral Lawn. I'm with Houssen Houss here in LaPorte County, 717 Indiana Avenue, just down the road here. We had filed this a couple of months ago and then notice wasn't adequate because of a deficiency with regards to publication with the Herald, excuse me, with the Westville Indicator. But we are here because we are petitioning to vacate the undeveloped but plotted roadway and/or alleyway adjacent to the property located at North Pine Lane, New Carlisle, Indiana, Hudson Township, with a legal description or a quasi-legal description, 2604, I'm sorry. The parcel adjacent is 2604-29233007, Hudson Lake Beach Lots 3971, 3973, 3974, subject to the Taylor Ditch Assessment Number One. This is a petition by Coral Lawn as the personal representative of the estate of John Lawn, who actually, I mean, that estate is still pending. So she has the capacity to do this and I will ask the board to take notice of the fact that there was a petition that was filed previous to vacate the other half of this roadway by Mr. Carrick, Bradley R. Carrick, at 7916 North Pine Lane. We're asking that the 15-foot by 100-foot or thereabouts portion of that plotted but undeveloped roadway be vacated and then, meaning the portion that would be entitled for Ms. Lawn or the estate of John Lawn to receive, that's what we're asking for here. And I know there are, I understand there are remonstrators present. I don't know what else to say here at this point because the reality is that the other half has already been done. It's been taken care of. It's there. So what's the issue with this half? I don't know. It's up to the board's discretion, obviously. So I would entertain any questions.
Any questions from the commission? Legal?
I just want to disclose, I've represented the estate of John Lawn for years and I referred them to Mr. Volts. Never had any conversation about this and I have no interest in the outcome, but I want to make sure I have full disclosure.
Am I correct that you're saying the north 15 feet has already been vacated by this board?
That is correct from the adjacent landowner, meaning Mr. Carrick. That would be Bradley R. Carrick at 7916 North Pine Lane, New Carlisle.
Okay. No questions from the commission? We'll open the floor for remonstrators for or against a petition.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board. Yeah, we were here about a couple of years ago on this. Two wrongs don't make a right and that's just what I'm going to start with today. First of all, the petition that's been filed before you today does not meet the requirements under the statute. This petition should have referred to Indiana Code 3674711. The petition must state the reasons for and the circumstances prompting the request. The petitioner has not stated the reasons for nor circumstances prompting this request. The petition does not describe how the conditions in the platted area have changed so as to defeat the original purpose of the plat. The petition does not state how it is in the public interest to vacate all or part of the plat, which is what you're doing if you vacate this roadway. The petition does not state that the value of that part of the land in the plat not owned by the petitioner will not be diminished by the vacation. The petition does not advise that you may impose reasonable conditions on any approval. And I guess I put the cart before the horse. I'm David Amber, attorney at law, 601 State Street. I'm here on behalf of Mr. and Mrs. O'Banion, who I previously rented or represented, who have property back here that it joins this roadway. You previously vacated the north half. This is Mr. Carrick's home. If you recall, just a brief history, he placed this temporary shed here. It was determined to be over his, not only violating C Act, but over his property. He came in here and asked us
Home viewers want to hear you. Yes.
Sorry about that. So Mr. Carrick requested that you vacate the north half of this roadway, which was 30 feet. My clients remonstrated, you went ahead and vacated anyways. The next day, Mr. Carrick put up a gate, not blocking the half of the roadway that was vacated, partially on his, partially on what you're being asked to vacate tonight. This map, by the way, was provided by Mr. Hendricks as in his capacity as county surveyor. My clients have been paying me for two years to try to get that gate taken down. It was supposed to have been taken down by the county highway department and then it was stopped by Commissioner Graham Marosa. Now Ms. Lawn is in here asking that this south half of that roadway be vacated. That's the only access my clients have to the rear of their property. Their property is over here and there's no room in between their house and the lot lines to get equipment, anything to the backyard. And they use this, used to use it till Mr. Carrick put up this gate that he refuses to remove, use it to get to the rear of their property. Mr. O'Banion has several health issues and they often use that right-of-way to get him to the back door of the property. And they asked me to apologize that they couldn't be here tonight because he just found out he has lung cancer and he's got bigger things to take care of than to attend this meeting. But if you vacate this, you are decreasing the value of my client's property and therefore we would ask that this south portion remain open. It's the only clear way for my clients to get to their property. Now, there is an unimproved but platted roadway on the other side of my client's home. Unfortunately, it's heavily wooded and my clients don't have the funds nor the right to enter a county roadway and clear trees from a platted but not improved county roadway. So it truly is the only way they can reach the rear of their property. In addition, the petition at paragraph three states that the undeveloped but plotted roadway and/or alleyway are not being used for any public purpose. It was until Mr. Carrick put that gate up, it's how they, my clients, accessed the rear of the property. Paragraph four of the petition states that the vacation of the undeveloped but plotted roadway and/or alleyway would not be detrimental to any public use or purpose. Again, it would be definitely detrimental to my client's ability to use that to access the rear of their property. So therefore, we would ask that you do what I wish you would have done before, deny this petition. Mr. Carrick got his north half to cure the sins of his building, but my clients need that south half to access the rear of the property and we would beg of you to not grant tonight's petition. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Are there any other remonstrators for or against a petition? State your name and
My name's Brad Carrick. I live at 7916 North Pine Lane, New Carlisle. They vacated 50% of that roadway roughly a year and a half, two years ago. I own the one side. I don't see why the other side can't be vacated and granted to Ms. Lawn in the front 100 feet. The center is full of trees all the way down. There's no way that you can drive down that roadway without trespassing on my property or Ms. Lawn's property due to the trees that are growing down that middle of that center of the roadway.
Thank you. Any other remonstrators for or against a petition? Anybody in on Zoom? Seeing none. Mr. Volts?
Well, I guess I would respond to Mr. Amber's presentation with regards to the fact that there's no way to access the rear of the property. If you look at the, an aerial photo of what this property is, and I don't want to get into stuff with regards to encroachment or whatever else, but the reality is, they have access, meaning the remonstrators have access to their property off of East Lilly Lane directly to their garage. This, this area to the north, meaning the plotted but undeveloped roadway, doesn't provide any other access to their property that they don't already have. And I guess I would look at this then that if it was already granted for Mr. Carrick a year, year and a half ago, whatever it was, what's the difference here? It seems to me to be the same type of petition. I could be wrong. I've been wrong before. But we would ask that the petition would be granted.
Any questions from the commission? Rita.
And if I may, real quick, I'm sorry. The thing that I'm talking about here is right there. So that's to access the O'Banion's property. So when you're talking about that they're complaining that this is going to cut off their access, this is their property, that's their property, that's their property. They have access right there. And if you note, and again, I'm not going to talk about encroachment matters or whatever else, these are the properties that are owned by either Coral or John Lawn or the estate. So the issue is, is that what they've continued to do is come across my client's property and we've got that cleaned up a little bit, but for them to indicate that, that there's no access to their property, you look at Lilly Lane right here, it goes right in the roadway.
Thank you. More commissioners are looking at it.
I just have
How about that illegal garbage? Oh, I'm sorry. Illegal garbage. He said it wasn't up to par on the legals. Does that mean anything to you?
I don't understand your question.
He brought up, said this wasn't a legal deal today. The other attorney did.
Mr. Amber has mentioned His argument was that the petition did not have the contents that the statute requires, so it's up to you to decide if Mr. Volts's presentation was adequate.
Thank you.
The other question, maybe, I don't know if it's a question, but it seems recently when we vacate these lanes or proposed roads from one point, when we did it, we would always vacate the other side and ask the other owner if they wanted that particular piece. So I guess since this was kind of current a year and a half, two years ago, as to why we didn't do that.
My understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Beeji, is that the petitioner's entitled to one half.
Correct.
Then any adjacent landowners would be entitled to the other half if they join in on the petition. If they don't, this is what we wind up with. So we've got Mr. Carrick, who owns that entire property to the north. That's why you see this plotted but undeveloped roadway kind of cut off as far as its width because it went from 30 to 15.
Correct.
Because he wound up with 15 feet. Now, this Plan Commission has been of the habit, I shouldn't say the habit, this Plan Commission has followed the statute that if the adjacent landowner does not join in on the petition or otherwise acquiesce, and correct me if I'm wrong here, otherwise acquiesce or consent to the vacation and then they don't declare any property interest in that, then it would go to the petitioner. And am I wrong here or?
It's, the commission's done both, okay? There for a lot of years when there was a vacation, the Plan Commission would vacate both sides. And one side would go to one party, one side would go to the other party. I don't remember, and there's usually a reason why half of it's vacated. I don't remember why half of it was vacated in this case. But there's usually a reason why.
It's like, see, that was back in the olden days when I was here.
Questions from the commission?
Okay, thank you.
Any input, Mike?
Trying to remember why the other half wasn't vacated. I think most of us were present for that hearing. To my recollection, the, the other property owners, like Mr. Volts alluded to, they were not part of the petition and were not asking and didn't want it, but now they do. May I address the board?
The commission allow? Sure.
The reason the other half wasn't vacated was to leave my client's access. If I remember right, the attorney that presented this before had a letter of Ms. Lawn consenting. But the board, as an alternative to keep both sides happy, cured the sin of the barn but left my client's access. And if you guys grant this petition tonight, you undo, because I fought like heck last time, and 33 years practicing law, I'd never seen you guys, now I'm not here every meeting, but never seen half of a roadway vacated. And we fought and we fought and we begged to keep that access open. And then the gate was put up. And now we have this petition. And please, quit where you left off last time. Leave my client's access to their property. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one question for Mr. Amber.
I don't know if we allow, but ask your question of the commission.
I mean, the O'Banions have access through this hemlock that has not been developed, right? I mean
Yes. Unimproved, platted, unimproved.
My clients, to stay on their property line, can't get around the path of their property.
But Mr. Amber's Mr. Amber's, if they use, what if they use hemlock that comes right down next to their lot?
Yeah, the north-south platted.
We need a microphone again.
I understand. We need a portable one. My clients use this roadway to get back here. This is all, as you can see, is grown up with trees and they don't have the means or the ability to clear that area, even if they could, they can't. It's a county roadway. And so that's to get to the back of their house, the only way is through this strip. And if you vacate equal to the blue parcel, which is Ms. Lawn's, you've cut them off from their property back here.
But that, that back access also has, is treed, the one that you're saying that they're using?
They can get up to here to get and move around on their property. See how clear it is?
Not really.
Well, I've got pictures. It's clear. They can get there. They can get a car through that property without trespassing on that half of roadway.
All right.
You got pictures? I'd like to see them. What I'm seeing here is not that.
So I guess my question would be, if they're not allowed to drive beside their garage, then the garage must be too close to the setbacks because there should be plenty of room for them to be able to drive up from Lilly Lane, up beside their garage, to what they need to address there at the north end of their property.
He's going to present us pictures that there's enough room to go around the tree and not trespass on Lawn's property.
This is my client when she was measuring the gate. This is my client when she was measuring the gate. You can see that roadway probably is about right here because Tony said the gate was eight and a half feet over onto the right-of-way. It's a nice and clear path back there that they can access their property. Add another one. Here's a smaller version on that. The bottom, the bottom two on that email give you a good perspective.
Yeah, hemlock. So nobody's addressed them.
Right here. This one's your address?
Yes.
You can ask whatever you want, Rita. Floor's yours.
Okay, so back to the hemlock. I know they brought up hemlock and you said that's too full of trees. So how many feet are actually between their garage there at the corner of hemlock and Lilly? How many feet do they have between what you're considering the roadway of hemlock and their garage there where they've got vehicles parked on the side?
I don't know. I would guess less than 15 feet.
But it could possibly be a thoroughfare for them to actually access the north end of their property then because I can see vehicles that are actually, and you know, these are the county things and you can't really judge where these lines are.
Right.
But I can see vehicles off to the west side of the property line according to the county, which to me gives the thought that there's probably more than 15 feet then that they could access all the way to the north end of their property from the west side of their garage.
I don't know. I'd have to ask him and unfortunately with his health, it couldn't be here.
I mean, that's just my thought process for them to be able to still access the north end of their property without utilizing?
I'm not sure. It could be well, it could be, it could be a variety of reasons. I just don't know and I'd rather not speculate and try to unwittingly mislead you.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the commission?
Is there any setback whatsoever on the northeast side of the existing home? I'm sorry. Is there any setback whatsoever on the northeast side of the home at the southwest corner of the lawn property?
That would be a question for Mr. Amber.
I'm sorry, Mr. Cunningham. What was the question?
My question is if you look at the southwest corner of the lawn property and the northeast corner of the home, the existing home on your client's property, is there any setback whatsoever from that property line?
She owned two or three? I don't know. Sir, I, the building, you know, it was approved, it received a building permit. I would assume it complied at that time or received a variance. That house has been there for years.
I understand that, but we're looking at a garage that sits on kind of an angle, doesn't sit on the west side of property. The garage doesn't sit parallel to the property line according to our aerial shot. And there is, there's enough room for a car sitting alongside there and it seems to me that that's just as easy to get through from their own property as the half of the existing property that does have some trees on it. According to the aerial view I'm looking at, the existing home is sitting virtually on the property line of the Lawn's southernmost property.
Again, I can only approve it was, assume it was approved by the county and received a building permit and I don't know if they ever had a variance for it or not. I don't, no. I can address that. So the, they did file for a building permit, was handled by the commissioner before me. That was built. It was, it did not follow the plan that was approved and it's in violation of the setbacks and encroaching. Thank you.
So can, Mr. Amber, can I just ask you one thing? Like, do you know how often that your clients actually utilize?
They used to utilize it regularly until the gate was put up and then Commissioner Graham Marosa stopped the county commissioners from taking it down. I have emails and email chain Mr. Haney was part of that Mr. Mazinski requested the county highway to go out there and take that gate down once Mr. Hendricks made the determination in his capacity as county surveyor that the gate was eight and a half feet onto the non-vacated portion of the right-of-way. And it was supposed to have done, I believe, May 23rd. I have an email from Mr. Stevens saying he was going out there the next day. The email above that was from Mr. Mazinski saying, "Thank you." When the county went out to remove it, Commissioner Graham Marosa wound up being there and was on the phone with Ms. Lawn.
So they'd used it daily pretty much prior to?
I don't know if they used it daily. They used it routinely
Continuously, continuously.
Prior to that gate going up.
Okay.
And they haven't been able to use it since.
Okay, thank you.
And the gate should be removed, but that's not for this board to do.
All right, thank you.
Any other comments from the commission? Any thoughts?
If I may clarify here real quick, that gate's been there for eight years. This is, this is not something new.
I don't remember, Mike.
It's been there for many years. This has been Hatfield and McCoy feud between the neighboring parties for that long that has periodically involved multiple departments in the county, including the county commissioners, the building department, the county surveyor, and others. The feud seems to center on them, there's trees in that undeveloped roadway and the, Mr. Carrick and Ms. Lawn, I believe both had claimed that when O'Banions were trying to access their property using the unimproved roadway, which I'm not even sure, that should be allowed. It's unimproved. It's not, it's not meant for public transport.
Yeah, if this board chooses to vacate or not, they still have to seek commissioner's approval to use an unimproved roadway and they can't just drive across it and destroy it and make it a muddy mess.
And so there's been ruts, you know, and mud and damage to
Over the years, we've seen the commissioners have people use unapproved roadways and just ruin them, whether they're farmer or residential. So they have to ask the commissioners for use, whether we vacated it or not.
Mr. Polwin, you, you can't go back eight years. How many years would you verify that you're aware the gate's been there?
It has been there for years longer than I've held this position. So I can't confirm for sure that it's been eight years, but it's been more than four.
More than four. Thank you.
Any other questions from the commission? Any thoughts from the commission? Pleasure of the commission. Any thoughts from the commission? Pleasure to the commission.
I'd like to make a motion to, for the commission to vacate the undeveloped plot, plotted roadway and/or alleyway adjacent to the property located at North Pine Lane, New Carlisle, Indiana, Hudson Township.
So, motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I second it.
So, motion is second. Any discussion for the plan commission? There's a motion to vacate.
Mr. President, I seem to, I seem to recall this was shortly after I was elected in my first year on the plan commission. I seem to recall, in my mind anyway, the more I sit here and listen to everything, the reason that we kind of split it was there was no property owner on the other side, you know, on the southern side and anyone from Ms. Lawn or the estate that seemed to indicate that they did want it. They didn't remonstrate against it, if I recall at the time. I think Mr. Carrick did, but I don't think Ms. Lawn did, if I remember correctly. But I know Mr. Carrick did. That was part of the consternation. That kind of led to this split thing at the time. It's a difficult question here before us tonight.
Any other comments about the commission? We have a motion on the floor in a second to vacate. We'll call for the vote. All those in favor to vacate, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes.
One nays or two nays?
Two nays, five two. Motion passes. Thank you. Going to old business, which, Joint Zoning Ordinance Workshop, public's invited to attend. I guess we'll go through probably Doug first and then Mike. I believe everyone's received emails about possible changes or amendments to the joint zoning ordinance.
All right, so, I have on my notes, we're going to make a change in, well, we'll stick with the, let's do the JCO first and then the subdivision ordinance. Okay, so we have a, we want to clarify the issues surrounding shipping containers that's in front of the BZA constantly. And so, they're asking for a variance. I, I think we need a call on whether we're going to have shipping containers in this county or not. And if so, we don't have any building requirements for them, do we, Mike? Correct me if I'm wrong, on tying them down or securing them in some way. So, I'm asking the plan commission to give us some clarification. So, maybe that might reduce, well, first of all, it'll give the public a better idea on what the county's position is. And secondly, it'll give the BZA some guidance on how to decide these matters. And third, when their variance is granted, I'm always concerned that it's not safe because we don't have any standards to secure these things.
I would agree with counsel that we don't have written standards on how we've handled it in the rare occurrence that the BZA has granted approval and it's conditional upon an inspection. They check for there to be a proper footing, proper footing depth, and anchored properly such as like you would anchor a carport. That's the, that's what the procedure is now.
Whether that be a land anchor or a anchor into the foundation.
Anchor into the.
I mean, it could be a land anchor.
Right.
Yeah, because what I first see us doing tonight is the plan commission gives me direction on what to draft or make changes if you want to. And then I'll bring them back. Because Mitch Bishop sent, I think, I don't know if everybody got, basically a booklet that nobody's had time to go through yet.
Two hours before.
Yeah.
Are shipping containers allowed now?
No.
I believe in ag zoning for ag purposes, but not in other zoning.
How about industrial? Because I mean, if we, if we don't allow an industrial in ag, we're going to have a lot of cleanup to take care of.
Yeah, and I think that's a problem. I don't think we say either way. I think we're kind of using common sense, which is never good.
I think we need to address if it's going to, if they're going to be in ag, they need to be on an ag use lot of at least 20 acres. I think that will take care of a lot.
I was under the impression they weren't allowed, but yes, we need to say where they are allowed and what they have to do if they are there.
These are these railroad ones we ship across. Well, I got a couple and I use them for storage for oils and.
I see a lot of them on ag and industrial, I agree. We have to allow them. That's their business.
But again, I'd like to make the statement that it needs, if we need to say a 20 acre agricultural used lot and that will take care of, most of the time we're coming up with three acre, five acre lots out in the country and they're going, well, I'm zoned ag. Well, you're not a farm and you, you know, so by going to the 20 acres, that eliminates a lot of trouble.
Okay, so ag, M1, M2, I think is a given. We should have it in manufacturing. Because I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Glenn, a lot of our requests are either for temporary placement during construction or as a shed, cheap shed, basically.
The majority are because they've already put it there and they find out that it's not legal to do it. So, they come in asking for forgiveness. So.
I would, I would go so far as to say, figure out where to put it. It should be disallowed otherwise.
Correct.
Okay.
So, if ag wants to use them, we have to come in for a permit?
No, no. If it's not ag, M1, M2, they're disallowed. That way, I mean, the best he can do is red tag it or force them to come in and ask for a variance after the fact.
Do you see my point, Doug? If we just say ag, a bunch of these homes are in ag zoning.
I'll put ag, no less than 20 acre parcel. Will that work?
Yeah, I think it'll help. I think it'll eliminate a lot of the trouble. Because if you have 20 acres, you're going to be isolated anyway. It's, the trouble is where we've got three acre and five acre lots and they end up putting the container up against their neighbor. You know, it's like, good neighbor program.
10 acres to be classified as a farm, so I would concur, but with at least a 10 acre ag use parcel. And I also agree with the cases that we're getting in residential lots. They're, they're a popular item. People are accruing them and putting them on their land. They're getting red tagged by my office and then they're appearing before the BZA to ask for forgiveness later.
If we're going to look at districts, I would suggest we might want to do B2 and B3 as special exception.
Do that.
Business districts. We're not going to do neighborhood commercial district. We're not going to do office service district, but B2 and B3 would possibly have some there, but they would need to be special exception.
Okay.
Anyone else on shipping containers?
I do have a question because the statement that if you've got 20 acres, what prohibits you from putting it up against your neighbor's property line? Are we going to have a 100 foot setback from the neighbor's property line if you had 20 acres? Or, here's what I look, I'm looking at three.
That's a good idea.
Three 20 acre parcels and the guy in the middle could have three of these things and set them against all three of his neighbors at the rear of the property.
That doesn't muddy it up.
Well, we start, if, in the ag, we're going to have, what, a 30 foot setback? I mean, it could be more. I'm just.
Fun thing, it seems to me if you're going to let a set of shipping container back there, you probably ought to have more than 30 foot setback from the neighbor's property. It's not like you're building a little shed.
What number do you like?
Well, if you got 20 acres, it seems to me like you can put a 100 foot away.
Can you do that?
Or they have to.
Get a variance.
Or they have to get a variance.
That's my thinking is no matter, no matter how many acres you've got, you're always up against somebody else's property.
Yeah, they're supposed to be used for storage, not for fences.
Do we have consensus on 100 foot setback?
If I may. As we're sitting here talking about this, if we are going to put, let's say, you know, 100 foot setback on it, maybe then the size wise, you know, trying to figure out, you know, let's say somebody's got nine and a half acres versus 10 or whatever the case may be. As long as they can meet that 100 foot setback in their zoned ag, maybe that, maybe that takes care of it either way.
I think the point is that.
If you've got three acres, it's going to be really hard to get 100 feet off a property line.
We're, we're just causing, we don't really want them, but we understand that farmers and industrial in some B3 cases, they're a good idea because they are secure and they do contain. But the same point, if we do what you're recommending, then we're, we're allowing residuals to start having them and we don't want that.
Well, my intent was to just, just only allow an ag, M1, M2, B2, B3, period. It's just not, and I'm going to caution in terms of use. Because we have residential use in ag areas. So, if we say it's used as those categories only, I think that'll solve the issue. There's two kind of containers. There's a 40 foot and a 20 foot. Do you want to declare which one you allow? I don't think we need to. Forty foot gets pretty big.
I want to declare how many are allowed. You can't have 200 of them.
Right.
That's, you could limit the overall scope of it.
Square footage of how many acres. But I'm saying there's a lot of difference between a 40 and, and the, actually, the 40s are actually cheaper than the 20s.
Right.
Because nobody wants them.
Nobody wants them. Because they're so, they're a behemoth. A 40 foot's a behemoth to try to move them along and get rid of them.
There's always, there's always a variance. So, if you want to come up with a number and say, you know, not beyond the scope of.
100 feet?
So, my question, when you said ag use, that they have to provide ag use, is that going to be detailed? It's like, okay, well, I'm ag use. I have three acres and I have 20 chickens. It's ag use.
Here you are with the chickens again.
Just, it's just a mention. So, that's my, you know, so now we're cutting hairs again. It's like, okay, what do we determine as ag use? Do we need another definition for that then?
I don't think so. I mean, either you're a farmer or you're not. Hobby farming is not farming.
Well, that's why I was wondering about the acreage thing. I mean, I truly like the acreage thing of either 10 or 20 acres, but that's just my opinion.
Yeah.
Unless it's, unless it's something legally, I don't, I don't see why we don't say 100 feet. If you've got less than 100 feet, come to BZA.
It's, I'm going to ask the two experts on, on containers here. But that's, that's not going to inhibit, is that going to inhibit manufacturing or business in any way? Because I see different sizes driving down the road.
What do you want, what question are you asking?
What's the article?
If we put a length limitation on them,
Oh nine.
are we going to affect any, inadvertently affect any manufacturing or business?
They have to put some doors in them if you're going to use them very successfully. A 40 foot or 20 you can get away with just using cargo doors around them. But they will put up doors, you can roll up doors, you can do anything you want to with them if you want to spend the money.
So, Tony, you just said limit no more than 100 feet?
Yeah, but again, I don't want to stop industrial people from having them.
But cubic feet is in one of them, 20 by.
No, if they have an industrial facility and they've got, and parked within five feet of line, we got a bread making facility, we got O-Tech, we have lots of people that store their trailers and park as many as they can in their lot because they're coming and going. If we say 100 feet, they're instantly in jeopardy.
Mr. President, I would think that there's no reason why we couldn't set different setback requirements for ag versus, you know, M1 and M2. You know, if somebody's, you know, if you're in M2 and you've already got, you know, you know, like, for example, you mentioned the bread factory, they're out there with, and O-Tech, they've got hundreds of semis lined up out there, at least semi-trailers up there. Regardless of whether it's a semi-trailer or a Conex container, you know, there's still those shapes there on the property line right, right up against it. So, we may be able to have a different setback for ag versus.
Yeah, that's, and we already have setbacks in place for all the manufacturing business anyway. So, I could just put the 100 foot setback requirement for ag use.
Is there any discussion on, somebody gets wild and has 100 of them? Or 50 of them, or 20 of them, or 10 of them?
Maybe one, one container per 20 or 50 acres or something? I, I don't know what that number would be because depending on.
You got more than 10?
Well, and I'm not sure, I'm just throwing a number out just to, you know, that way if you've got somebody with 10 acres, they can't, you know, they're not putting a train line of them down the road.
One per 10 acres?
I'm not sure what the.
We could do it in the form of a percentage of lot coverage.
I think we're going a little bit of far from what I really intended to do here. I think the main goal was to shut them down around the residents.
Okay.
There is something we need to consider. There are, there's got to be, just myself driving around, there's got to be at least 100 that have been here in this county in residential places that I've seen since I moved, since, you know, at least the past 10 years. At least 100. Right, right corner, right across from the fairgrounds, there's a guy has that cool old train setup. He's had a Conex container there since, as far back as I can remember. It's painted nice. You really, if you're not, if you're driving by, you're not going to realize it's probably it unless you take a close look at it. But, I mean, is there some sort of special exemption for that? They might be able to maintain them or, I mean, right now, unless you're in M2, maybe M1, you can't have one. So, ag technically now, you can't have one on ag. I know I looked that up.
How many do you need?
Well, I think, I think the argument can be made that their grandfathered in because we're just going to pass, eventually pass this, change the code. So, anything that occurred prior to, now, if they've just popped it in there without a variance, they have an issue. But, if there's a previous air variance granted, this wouldn't affect it because it's going to be grandfathered.
Okay.
So, where are we at? 100 foot setback? How many acres? 10 or 20?
And limit it to.
10 or 20?
Four 40 foot containers.
Four 40 foot containers, max?
Per parcel?
Per 10 acre minimum parcel or 20 acre minimum parcel?
We said 20.
Okay, 20.
I think 20 works better for us getting them out of residential.
And what about?
It is, what about the handful of places where you have somebody who's, has their, let's say their, their working area that's one parcel that's not deeded into their larger field that they've acquired. So, you know, you have a, you know, and I see that sometimes in some of the areas driving around. It's, are they going to have to kind of pick those up and then move them? Well, I guess they'd be grandfathered in, but the idea would be there if they're not having to cut out a, and sacrifice farmland they're currently tilling.
If they wanted a new one, they'd have to put it on their 20 acres. And not off the piece they cut off of their home and their farm. What about the securing of these? Something we need to put in that they have to be secured? Or how specific do we need to get?
If they're not a temporary fix, I mean, if they're not a temporary, they're there for two weeks or something or a month. I don't know how long they leave them.
Yeah, if they're meant to be permanent, they should have adequate footings and they should be properly anchored. You know, I, maybe we cover that by saying installation subject, a building permit is required and installation subject to approval of the building department. Then Mike just sets the standards that way. There you go.
There you go.
Got a legal megal working.
We have an echo in the back, so yeah.
All right.
So, just really quick, when you mentioned the grandfathers, so you're talking about people that had a variance to bring them in? Then they'll be grandfathered?
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, all right. Just wanted to clarify what I heard.
The people that just plop them down are not going to be.
We're not grandfathering these containers on residential lots.
No, I'm saying if they've been granted a variance already.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, and that shouldn't have been on residential.
But, the ones that are on residential lots that we're continually cleaning up because they're an eyesore to their neighbors, we're going to, they still, they have to, they don't fit.
Yep.
Anchoring by permit. Get that?
What's that?
100 foot setback, 20 acre minimum, max four 40 foot and anchoring by building commissioner's permit.
Yep, got it.
I still think 10 acres probably would be a better fit. I don't know if anybody, if we want to kind of just spitball that. I still think 10 acres at a minimum, as long as they're hitting their 100.
The problem with 10 acres is just like, like we're saying here, then you've, then you've got these, you know, horse farms, llama farms, you know, they're going to want them and, and they're, they're in residential. They're not really farms. That's why going to 20 really does what it's supposed to do. If you want a container, you know, to store your pesticides, to store things, you know, on a farm or in an industrial place, we're okay with that.
There are a lot of residential 10 acre parcels out there that are, that are, well, hell, when I sold my house, I had 10 acres and it was zoned ag. So, in that neighborhood, I was over on 150 East. They had no business putting a shipping container out there.
And Mr. Haney, there's a lot of expensive 10 acre lots up against a lot of inexpensive 10 acre lots. So, do you see my point? That's, that's where we get the problem.
A 10 acre lot's about 660 by 660. So, they could do it. So, 20 acres.
That's what I prefer.
In ag zoning. But this does not affect M1, M2, B2, B3.
Right.
Ag zoning only.
So, on the other zoning designations, we will go. So on the other zoning designations, we will go with the setbacks that are already listed for those zoning districts.
And they have to come to the BZA. Oh, yeah, for the ones that are permitted, yes.
And we, this doesn't have to be necessarily conclusive this evening. We can, you know, take this under advisement. We, we, we've all received information from the county planner, who couldn't be with us tonight because he, he fell ill. But it was provided to the city of LaPorte by a consultant. They paid-
I got two sets you want to say.
-a significant amount of money for it. And I haven't been able to review it extensively, but it does appear to have quite a bit of good information in that, that we could review and consider if we meet for a part two of, of this later on in the year or, or next year. There's some stuff in there that would apply to cities and towns that wouldn't necessarily apply to us as an unincorporated area, but there's a lot of other information in there that I think is valuable. If I may comment, Mr. President, you know, when we first developed the joint zoning ordinance, the goal was to help to encourage economic development. And so Dave McCain, on behalf of City of LaPorte, myself, on behalf of county, and Steve Hale, on behalf of Michigan City, met, I think, once a month for a year and a half or so to make sure it all meshed. Why the City of LaPorte went off and did their own thing, I don't know. But I would say, I would suggest we take into consideration with, on these changes, that everything was the same at one time on purpose. So.
Is, after the changes have happened for the joint zoning ordinance, this book, is there a digital file somewhere that, because Mitch Bishop brings up some good points, that we, if we're, might move to a unified development ordinance with both joint ordinance and the subdivision ordinance, but there needs to be a digital file, and I know originally it was, but this is the third version, I believe, of this. So is there a digital file somewhere still?
I have the JZO, I, I got to verify this with my staff since we're talking about computers.
Yeah, I was looking at it.
I'm pretty sure I have it saved by chapter at, at the firm. I just need to confirm that.
Okay.
That's on JZO. I don't think I have subdivision ordinance.
I think we have one somewhere.
Yeah. These are online and, on the county website, and I, I think they're in multiple places. And one place is, is weird. It's got stuff crossed out, but there's another place where it's good access and it's indexed by chapter.
Yeah, it's under the planner's website.
Yep.
Do we want, because we, this started all with the solar. Do we want to do anything with the solar ordinance with this, this wording here that we've had for a while?
Well, the solar ordinance we passed is a standalone, because the solar, well, this, the Indiana statutes have a very specific way that we amend our zoning code, and there are many hoops I have to jump through. I'm not complaining. The solar ordinance, though, is a standalone that we passed just through the plan commission and the commissioners. I would recommend we keep it that way. As I foresee, we're going to have more changes in the future. For example, what's it called? The flood, the flood, is it flood ordinance? The flood plain ordinance, we took out of the joint zoning ordinance because every, I think, three years, I D M updates it. So we have to pass a new one. So we took it out because otherwise I got to follow all the steps connected with a zoning code change. So I suggest we keep solar standalone and not part of this.
Okay. Before we open the floor to the public, any discussion on Mitch Bishop's, thank you, Mitch, fourteen pages of-
Yep, fourteen.
Overall, I'd like to see us develop some stance, some, making any of the highly flammable storage, processing, and manufacturing a special exemption, meaning they would have to go before the BZA. We've seen a few issues here crop up over this past year where things continue to occur and there, there's got to be better, some better guardrails to put around that. I know there are some certain things in there for handling waste and things like that, but overall, looking at some of the stuff moving forward, especially if there's just, let's say, a storage location where they're just storing it and they're processing it in another location, there's got to be somewhere around that. And of course, obviously, there's a difference between highly flammable and combustible. Highly flammable is going to be the things that are much more easily ignitable. And of course, once they go, they tend to propagate much, much quicker. So I, I think that's definitely something we need to include in here, make sure we can kind of get a better handle on these things.
Have to look at, see if we can tighten ours up.
Yeah, I, I would suggest, let me tweak our, our, our use chart, okay? Because it's not very specific. It has chemical manufacturing storage, which is pretty general, and then explosive manufacturing storage. Okay, what is that? And we don't have a definition. So what I would suggest is we maybe add a category, because I think it's presumed that the flammable stuff falls under the, the petroleum tank farms, et cetera. And this is really, we, we-
Yeah, there's many categories.
-new products that didn't exist when we did this. So what I would recommend is we create another category of flammable products and then define that. Okay, and-
We should be able to pull a lot of that from the NFPA standards as well. Should be able to pull those definitions off of there and delineate them down.
They might have something.
Yeah, and we want to be, we want to be sure we handle highly flammable versus flammable and combustible separately. That way, because they're, you know, and obviously explosive.
We have an expert here, Councilman Novak, who might be able to give us a little bit of insight from the perspective of firefighters and flammable.
Yeah. Tell me where to find the correct definition, Randy.
The NFPA, NFPA-
Thank you, Councilman Novak.
Yeah, NFPA would be the place to, to get the standard, but I can, I can get you the chat, the books and everything for that. But the, the, the other part of it is, is somebody can haul truckloads that are placard going down the highway because they're required, and take them to a warehouse and unload them, and nobody knows what's inside there.
Exactly.
I mean, there should be something on the outside of the buil, I mean, if it's full of-
Flammable.
-stuff we're talking and other things, there should be something marked on the outside of the building also. I mean, so there's a lot of things that need to be looked at.
Okay.
I mean, anybody that has anything that's stored that's highly flammable and highly combustible or explosives or whatever, I mean, that, that stuff should all be, there should be an ordinance anyway that they have to report that to the county anyway.
I agree, because we can only go so far with zoning.
Right.
But that doesn't mean the county can't pass independent ordinances.
Right.
So, we, for, for this purpose, I think if we create a new category that's, that applies, because right now, it, it, if it explodes or being stored, that's about all we have, okay? In a tank farm.
Yeah, you gave us the three words, combustibles, flammable, explosive.
Right.
Yeah. And we, we don't really have combustible and flammable, at least as far as defined in the industrial areas.
But all, and all the, all three of those are the same as far, when it comes to firefight, I mean, they're all categorized the same. You don't, they're, they're all bad things that can cause a big fire, make a big boom.
Yeah, but for our purposes, when we talk about enforcing the zoning code, if somebody's in violation, I've got to be a little more specific on how I define these things. Okay?
I agree with you a hundred percent that zoning is only going to go so far. And then there needs to be rules in place in the county that anybody storing over X number of pounds of, just like they do with fireworks. I mean, fireworks, you know, if you have fireworks, we, we have to go to, when Menards set up a display, we'd have to go to Menards and inspect their display. That's how much fireworks are regulated. I mean, every store that's out there. But then when it comes to this other stuff, and especially when you get into ag part with the chemicals and stuff, I mean, they're regulated a lot, but there's, there's a big missing gap with the issues that we've been talking about.
Right, right. Well, and I'm working on some other stuff.
Right.
Outside of here, so. What?
Cleaning solvents, people that have to clean bad stuff out.
Right, right.
I mean, it, it goes as far as, you know, it'd be nice in the county, without getting too restrictive, but it'd be nice in Michigan City, if you open a business, you have to register with the city that you're doing business. I mean, we don't know, you could open a business anywhere in the county and nobody knows what you're doing. Or, I could ask him right now, hey, where's so and so doing this, that? And you go, because they don't have to report to the county at all, unless they're selling food, then they got to have the health department come in.
I agree with that, and that's why I like the special exception requirement, because it, it puts a, a check in there, and, and then they would be required to report that to the county to get a special exception by the BZA. It gives us a chance to have a conditional approval, know exactly what's going on in there, and then if there's a problem later on down the road, we can refer back to that and say, hey, you told us you were doing this, but you're actually doing this.
You know, in Michigan City, the registry, it's, it's free. So it's not, it's not to punish people, it's not to stop you from doing anything, but it allows, when somebody opens business or changes a business, it allows the building department to come in to check everything, to make sure there, everything's up to code. In this, we're referring to businesses that have the public coming in. I mean, if you sit in your house and you're in a bookkeeper and nobody ever comes in your house, you know, you, you don't need to have exit signs and things like that. But if, if you've got an actual market or something that's there and, and you're restricting, you know, you're bringing people in and you're restricting the way they can move through there, and there, it needs to be checked out just to make sure everything's safe.
All right.
But there's a way to do it without getting crazy, so.
Thank you. So I guess that'll open the floor up for public comment. Come into the memorial podium, name, address, floor is yours.
My name is Stephen Nightingale. My address is nine nine eight East 1000 North in LaPorte. It's a forty acre farm, and yes, I have one trailer on there, and it is a hundred feet away from the Hess and Stey Museum. I wish to make three comments about three articles and sections, and I'll make them as brief as I can. The first is Article 206, the second is 2207, and the third is 24.05. And I don't have my watch on because it's a smart watch, but I'll try to do this well under ten minutes. And for Article 202, Article 2, Section 6D, reads, "The use determination of the enforcement official may be appealed to the Board of Zoning Appeals for an interpretation of the use provisions of the zoning ordinance." And I've spoken to Mike about this previously, and I have three suggestions, three comments and suggestions. Number one, there is no limitation in what I just read, what is the law to standing, what it says right now. If you want, if you disagree with, that you can appeal the, to the zoning ordinance. And I don't want to put words into Mike's mouth, but that protects Mike as much, as much as it protects anybody else. So I think that standing is a big issue these days among the legal folks, as I'm sure there are, but I don't think we need to change that there. Number two, there is no limitation on time there. Statutes go for years. Do we really need that? I don't think we do. The one thing where I think we could use clarifications, and I appreciate Mike's comments on this, is how does one appeal to the Board of, of Zoning Appeals that's not in here at access? And Mike suggested that I bring this to your attention as a bit of past when Mike and I were discussing an ongoing matter. I actually had written three letters to the Board of Zoning Appeals. This is when the, the versatile was before the BZA, and I didn't get an answer to any one of them. You know, so I waved my hands a little bit. Here we are. I, I, it is my belief that a letter, certified letter to the Board of Zoning Appeals requesting, an individual requesting under section, Article 2, Section 06D, that I be permitted to address the Board of Zoning Appeals would satisfy that issue. I didn't discuss this with you beforehand, but certified letter.
Requesting what, though? I'm not understanding.
Requesting permission to address the Board of Zoning Appeals.
That you don't, it doesn't work that way.
How does it work?
Okay, we're at a workshop here and it's open discussion tonight.
Well, that's, that's, that's all I'm doing.
In a Board of Zoning Appeals, it's petition specific, right? So the statute says you have to do one, two, three, four, five, six to apply for a variance or a special exception to the Board of Zoning Appeals. The Board of, Board of Zoning Appeals doesn't discuss matters generally. They either-
I get that.
-approve or deny requests.
Yeah.
Okay? So if you're, if Mike makes a decision and you don't agree with it.
Yeah.
Then you just simply file an appeal to the Board of Zoning Appeals from the building commissioner's decision and tell them what it is you want.
Well, I think we're saying the same thing. I, you've been doing this lo, even longer than I have. I've only been doing this for two years now. I, if a decision, in this particular case, does this require BZA approval? If the, if, if Mike's decision is no, and my decision is, hey, wait a minute, 0206 gives me the right to appeal to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Right.
It doesn't give me a key to the front door. How would you resolve that? I think it's easy, it's easy to resolve, having the laws right here, that I can appeal this.
Right.
How do I go on the agenda?
Send it to the board secretary.
I send it to the board secretary, to the secretary of the Board of Zoning Appeals, that I request under Section 2.06 to appeal the decision of the enforcement official before the BZA. Is that correct?
Yeah.
That's all I need to do.
Yeah, and, and I think that's here and it's okay. I think you're asking more procedural type questions. I don't want to get too specific, specific in the JZO.
I, I'm asking the question that Mike suggested that I ask.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
And I think I've got the answer.
Can I ask a, a quick question? Because I'm reading 2.06D, "The use determination of the enforcement official may be appealed to the Board of Zoning Appeals for an interpretation of the use provisions of the zoning ordinance."
Yeah.
The way I read that is if you came to Mike and said, I'd like to use to do X, Y, or Z, and he says, no, you as the owner, who asked for a different use, could appeal to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Well, I'm not the owner, but it doesn't specify until-
That's what, that's exactly what I'm asking. So people can't come and say, well, Joe Smith, I don't like him selling apples. I would like to appeal that decision by Mike because I don't like Joe Smith smelling, selling apples. It's not your use, it's your neighbor's use.
Well, that's exactly, we just had that. We just had that in the last meeting, because Mike wasn't comfortable with continuing the use at a certain zoning, and he said, I want the board to look at this because I don't, and so, I mean, Mike has the discretion to bring it to the board, whether it's even appealed from the outside.
And I'm going to review these before they get to the BZA. So if somebody says, I don't like, you know, Joe selling apples next door, and Mike said it's okay, it's, it's not going to go to the BZA unless there's an allegation or an interpretation or something the board should review. But it's not going to be used as a complaint forum.
That's what, that's us.
Well, that, I, I'm not clear. If I'm, I'm next door, if, where, where we are is an example, but it's not the only example. If there's, in, in particular, if, let's say, I disagree with a decision, and particularly if it, well, in the specifics, is, is a certain activity, let's call it a land contouring project, just kind of bring it out of the sky here, is that, and if the decision is that this does not need to go to the BZA, and my complaint is that it does need to go to the BZA, that's-
Yeah, and that's what Doug says. If, if you didn't like your neighbor, he would look at it, and if Mike said it was okay, he would decide if that's going to the BZA or not. If, if there's something that the use is in the book, needs to be considered by the BZA.
Actually, I, I'm not, I'm not sure that I agree with what you just said, in, in terms of what the law says. The, the law, as it sits right here, is if I disagree with an enforcement official, I can request the BZA to review, and I have standing to do it. There is no time limitation. And the only question from Mr. Beige is, what's the, the letter, and I think I've heard, a letter to the secretary of the BZA gets me on the podium.
Gets your appeal.
That doesn't get me a favorable vote by the board.
Keep in mind what I think with the point Tony was making, it's got to be contained within this book, okay?
You, you gotta say, but that's the JZO.
Joint Zone, JZO. It's got to be contained, it's got to be-
JZO, I'm sorry.
A section and an issue surrounding interpretation, Mike's interpretation, of the joint zoning ordinance.
Yeah.
Yes.
I live with it.
Yes.
Well, that, yeah, that's-
Yeah, that's what's there. We're all, we all agree.
I got the answer I wanted. That's one out of three. Let's move right on, and I think the other two will be even easier. Section 2207, in the Natural Resources Protection Chapter, here, here's the scoop. In the Natural Resource Prote, the duties of the enforcement officer include issuing a stop work order, and in 2214, the power to enforce includes the power to enforce the restoration of any natural resource areas impacted by a violation, by a violation of the area. I would ask, now, why are these limited to 22? This is the DNR. I'm actually arguing to give Mike some tea. I'm actually arguing to give Mike some teeth, give him a hammer, as we say, or actually give him legal authority, because right, right now, for the rest of it, if he wants to enforce something, he's got to, he's got to go to court. And as we all know, courts are stacked up, and this can go two and three years. If it's, it seems to me that if he's got the power for the natural resources, he should have that power for the rest of, for, for the remainder of the ordinance. Mike, I, I don't anticipate you disagreeing with me. I guess you'll, you'll have a chance in just a minute, but I think that, that as you, as you consider how you're going to amend the JZO, is that you give the enforcement officer the legal support that he needs to do his job, because I don't think he's got it right now.
I, I can agree that when I need to take enforcement action, action against individuals or corporations, it takes a long time to get through the court or, and injunctions. We have had several code enforcement meetings where we have discussed hiring a hearing officer or magistrate, and putting specific code violations on the docket, so we can start pumping these cases through and getting this county cleaned up faster. I don't know where we're technically at with that yet. We're waiting on the draft ordinance, but it, but it is something that has been discussed. And part of the other thing he was referring to, like, we concurrently enforce state statutes with DNR. So that's not typically an action that I would take on my own. I, I either enter a case jointly with them, or at the very least, I take concurrent action and follow their lead, as the floodplain administrator, depending on what outside agency it might be.
Okay.
I would just mention, I, I don't think you want to hear me read the, the Indiana Code, Title 36-4, but I've got it here.
You can present that for us to, for Mike to give to us later.
It, it, it seems, I, I have read this, and I'm a doctor, I'm not a lawyer, you're all not doctors, as far as I know, but we do overlap in certain ways, that it seems to me that the legal path to go in this direction is pretty clear. And I'll just leave it at that. That's, so that's number two. Of three, and number three is, I hope, the simplest of all, 2405C Hazard. Right at the end of that, see, why has, I, I ask you, why is the phrase, "Through the excessive production of traffic, noise, smoke, odor, fumes, or glare, has been stricken from the ordinance," rather than, say, if necessary, adding the phrase, "including but not limited to." And I'll repeat the words, "traffic, noise, smoke, odor, fumes, or glare." Why was this, why, why is, is, Beige, would you tell me why that was stricken?
This, well, I'll, I'll go back and double-check it, but this should track the language of the Indiana Code exactly. So the, these factors that are listed here in the JZO are taken from the Indiana Code.
Yeah.
Okay? And I could check the code, maybe, maybe there's a typo or something, or a scrivener's error.
What's, having, having brought the Indiana Code with me, do you recall what section it?
No.
Okay.
Dr. Nightingale, which, which one are you talking about? 24?
2405C Hazard.
C, hazard, okay.
I could take a look at it. If, if we're missing language, we certainly need to add it. But I would not recommend adding language in addition to the code, because zoning is a statutory.
Oh, I, I, hey, I even, I didn't learn that in medical school, but I learned that in the University of Hard Knocks.
Okay, there you go.
It's an excellent school.
Yeah, I'll, I'll check that off. Mission language.
It's better than Harvard, and I've been to both.
Okay.
Okay? But what I think is that this, this is a language that is in the code, in, in the JZO right now, and absent a compelling reason to remove it, seeing as how it pretty much summarizes the whining that you'll hear from this podium for, on occasion, I'd leave it in there.
All right. Anything you have, give it to Mike a copy, and he can distribute it to us, so, because we're not, we're just here taking information, so.
Well, I think I made my point. I think, Mr. Beige, maybe one of these days we'll run into each other at, at the bar around the corner.
There you go. There you go.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The floor is open for public comment on this JZO workshop.
I got one more, too. Batteries.
Combustible, explosive, flammable.
Yeah.
How many batteries can you put in a container?
Okay, so, the way we've handled this thus far, we're told the legislature's going to come down with rules and regulations, and at my age, I'm not sure I can wait that long. So, so, the way we've handled it, I like how we've handled it. I just wanted to check and discuss it with the Plan Commission to make sure we've made a conscious decision, because really, Mike and I kind of navigated our, through, ourselves through the first request. We have another request coming. All right? So from what I understand, with batteries, that, they're not all the same, and actually there's some development in new batteries. So on the Monroe Project, what the BZA did is we set limitations, okay, and certain rules, where they had to train the local fire department on how to fight the fire. We think we put a water tower in, we had reporting requirements, we had inspection requirements, and so they're not in here at all. What I recommend we do is we put electrical storage facility, including batteries or any other type of electrical storage, and make it a special exception. Don't try to get any farther into it, because technology is changing so quickly, and I'm over the age of 50 and don't understand most of it.
Energy storage devices.
Just storage devices, and keep it that generic. So that way, when it gets in front of the BZA, the BZA can delve in with whatever specificity they want. Because I, because we're talking about another facility coming, I don't think it's the same type of battery, from what I understand.
We can codify this.
What's that?
We can codify that in the code.
Yeah, so at least we have some mention of it, because right now, we have nothing saying anything, and it, and so, when we, and the, the petition was fine with it. They have a fine attorney, we worked together on it, but technically, we don't have anything in our code covering it at all.
Is that something you could send us to approve, maybe next meeting, to actually vote on codifying in the code? Put it inside?
Yeah, or we can, I mean, the request we're going to have coming, we got a few months. I think we'll be done with this by the time we get there. But I want to make sure everybody agreed, the way we handled it. Number one, and number two, that we should handle it that way moving forward.
Reader brought one up that does a, that's rearing its head in Michigan right now.
The marijuana proposal that we've been, that I kind of have alluded to a few different times.
Yeah, I never did get there.
That we need to address that, because it's coming, and so we need, we don't have anything in there either. So if we're going to start.
Residential areas in Michigan are very upset at the odor coming from these farms. They say it's ruining their life.
They stink.
They stink.
Well, but until we.
Setbacks.
I mean, I could work on something, but it's illegal in the state until they change that law.
I know. But I, I would like to have something in the back door ready to go, because you just never know.
Okay.
That's right. One of them stink.
I got a really good joke to explain why you did get around to it. There's a song that goes with it.
Is there any other concerns for the JZO workshop?
Yes.
Yes?
Does it burn?
I absolutely agree with you on the, the Michigan thing, because we've got a few deals up there. Real estate deals, not that kind of deal.
Yeah, let's clarify that, Eddie.
But the restriction right now is a dispensary, and, and then they also have the production places, but the ones we're dealing with are the dispensaries, but they cannot be within 150 feet of a residence, which is not that far.
No.
I mean, so, and we need to have something in place, so that if, if and when the state ever does open it up, because up in Michigan, they're opening, they, they have corridors that they've identified as somewhat of a redevelopment area, revitalization areas, and they, they're just issuing as many permits as people want, and they're going to let the competition sort out who gets to stay.
Wow.
So, I, I mean, everything along 12 is under contract, everything on 39 is under contract. It is, it's just a madhouse, so it's better to have something in place now.
We need to be prepared.
I can get started, I can get a draft, like, at the ready, but it also depends on what the legislature does if and when.
Right.
Like in Chicago, for example, they got a number of limited licenses, and the licenses are limited to na, well, in the city, to neighborhoods and geographic areas. So the legislature might handle part of this, and then there's holes we want to fill in. That's why I really haven't done much on it, or anything, frankly.
I'll tell you what New Buffalo has, that, the one that they're working on.
All right, yeah. So, but there's so many, there, there's a big disparity in how the states are handling the sales.
Yeah.
And distribution, and that's going to have a significant impact on what we draft or pass.
Correct. I was just thinking of our meetings when we had the dancing things coming before us and the studios where we had to do the tours, and we weren't ready, we weren't prepared, and then we had to create.
Yeah, we scrambled.
Yeah. Well, look what we did with the six, the.
And keep the, keep the energy as.
Not ready for a strip club. We didn't have an order. We got.
I know.
An ordinance in place now.
Quick. I know, we did it quick.
Keep the energy as open as possible, things, they're moving so fast, we can't keep up. I mean, at this point, we're seeing modular nuclear power facilities.
Yeah, yeah.
They are coming. Any other, anything from the Plan Commission?
I have three comments. First, on the topic that was just brought up, I agree that if legislation changes, state and federally, we should immediately convene either by committee or commission to get in front of it, because we know it will be coming. Backing up before that, on the lithium storage, we already know that's coming. And I like the idea, again, of the special exception, because it puts eyes on it, it gives the BZA a chance to make any approvals, conditional, third-party inspections, or, you know, different things to make sure that we're covering all the safety aspects, the township fire is involved, hazmat, and we're not missing anything. Because right now, I don't think we have any language. So at least some broad language that puts a check in to give us some oversight. And, and lastly, Section 15.07 Basement Construction. I've, we've come up with a form that we would require the public to, to sign, that is acknowledgement of a high-water table in areas where we know that it exists. I've been interested in that ever since Meadowview Estates happened. There was like over 27 homes that were affected by subterranean water.
And thanks to council and the commissioners, that is solved.
Yes, yes.
Thank goodness.
But now, we don't want, we, we, you know, we don't want more problems and more subdivisions, especially in areas that we know that subterranean water exists. So I would like to add this form. This was approved by Doug a while ago. I've been saving this for a while. And, and the council, the last time I was there to discuss this specifically, they requested that I discuss this at, at the Plan Commission level, too. So I just want to kind of add this form into that Section 15.07.
Do you need a motion to get that added in? Make the motion.
I would suggest we do that by building commissioners' rule with approval of the Plan Commission. That way, we can change the form and see how it works, and we can just alter it, and we don't have to amend the entire JZO. I think that would be easier.
So there's a motion to accept that?
So moved.
There's a motion, the second?
Second.
There's a motion, couple seconds? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose. Thanks, Mike. That really helps.
We give everything you want, Mike. I got one on, I got one on the subdivision control ordinance, if we're done with the BZA.
Yes.
One, one more thing that I wanted to tie in, when we're talking about these highly flammable, especially, sorry, when we're talking about these highly flammable special exemptions, we put in there something where there's some sort of insurance, you know, I, I don't know exactly where we would put the mark, if, or just leave it up to the discretion of the BZA, put in some sort of insurance clause, so that, one of the things that we're running into with some of the volunteer fire departments is that they're getting equipment that's contaminated, ruined, because of some of the runoff from some of these hand sanitizer fires, and they're trying to get reimbursed from the company's insurance company, but they're saying, they're not wanting to reimburse them, because they're claiming it's a cost of doing business for the fire department. And of course, the fire department, every time they turn in a claim, the volunteer fire departments turn in a claim to their insurance, their rates go up. So there's got to be some way for things that are outside of the norm, such as this, we have these large volumes of product that's being just washing all over the place, contaminating hoses, gear needs to be washed. I mean, we're between the various departments, I think we're well up to just over $100,000. And that's, that's something that they should be able, I would think there'd be some kind of clause to put in there to have coverage in case it happens, these departments aren't out this money. Because they're on shoestring budgets now, as it is for the most part.
That's an excellent point, but I envision an ordinance, and I want to put teeth in that ordinance. If we put it in the JZO, he really doesn't have any enforcement authority under the code, so I'm not discounting what you have to say. But I kind of got in my mind, I'm going to put it somewhere else with some of the stuff we talked about my drafting. But it has not been forgotten.
Appreciate it, thank you.
And if I can't get it there, if it doesn't fit in there, I'll come back here and find, figure something out.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Yes.
Real quick, this is the easy one. In the subdivision control ordinance, Section 04.07, Public Improvement Installation Guarantees. The way that the ordinance is drafted now, we don't have a stopgap to make sure that the bonds, the bond for the developer is in and properly done for the roads. So all I want to do is make a requirement that before that secondary plat is recorded, it's approved and goes in front of the county commissioners. Because I can't necessarily get it back here, but they're the, they're the last word anyway, and so that way, we've got kind of a double check to make sure it's happening.
Yes.
And all I'm going to do is add the words county commissioners in a couple places.